Welcome to the Tupelo City Council meeting for October 16, 2018. If you would, please stand for the invocation by Councilman Lynn Bryan, pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Nettie Davis.
Bear your head, please. Our Father, thank thee for thy many blessings, keep us from harm, guide us and teach us to be true to each other ourselves in thee. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call on Councilwoman Nettie Davis to confirm or amend the agenda in the agenda order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we will confirm and amend the agenda and amend our agenda order without any changes.
Second. All in favor? Proclaimations, recognitions, and reports, agenda recognition, Boy Scouts and Girl Scout.
There are none.
Recognition of city employees.
Thank you, President Beard. If I could at this time, ask Councilman Palmer to come join me. Not every day we get a good East Tupelo guy to be recognized, but if I could ask Sergeant David B. Estes III to come forward. As he's coming forward, we do the recognition. It has been brought to my attention that today is Sergeant Estes's birthday, and it may be befitting that we sing "Happy Birthday" to him, so...
Happy Birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Sergeant Estes, happy birthday to you.
At this time, on behalf of the City of Tupelo, with sincere appreciation and thanks, we'd like to recognize Sergeant David B. Estes III for 20 years of dedicated employment with the Tupelo Fire Department. Thank you, Sergeant Estes. That concludes the recognition.
4.3, public recognition. We'll start with Mr. Jennings. No. I've got a couple that I want to mention. David Knight, want to give a shout out to him for customer service and dealing with some concerns for the city that they just came to me on the side and said, "I just, I think he went above and beyond the call of duty in dealing with the problem." So, for him, and also Terry Blizzard for the work. If you look at our agenda tonight, all the grants that we're going to approve, doing a great job for the city. So, just shout out to those two people. Ms. Nettie?
I want to mention two things. I'd like to thank the group Tupelo Pride for inviting me to do the welcome, and they had a very good turnout and had a very successful event. And then I'd like to invite everyone to something that we have in the community at my church, Sister Callo, a comedy, religious comedy, and it's going to really be a very exciting event, and we'd like to invite everybody to come to this event and enjoy yourself and listen at some of the jokes related to religion.
4.4, the mayor's report.
Thank you, President Beard, and this one will be brief. As councilors aware, we've begun new fiscal year. Again, thank Ms. Hannah and her team for the great work of getting the budget together. We will, as stated during the budget process, get the six-month review of that scheduled in the near future. I want to thank Debbie Brangenberg and Downtown Main Street Association for a great event for the Chili Fest. That was a success as usual, a lot of folks down there. Want to announce, well, it's already been announced, but just a reminder, Pigskins in the Park is Saturday, November 10, right here at Fair Park. That will be a little bit different than in years past, but the same concept. There will be a barbecue competition to go along with the, both the Mississippi State and Ole Miss football games. We'll have the Jumbotron or the big screen there for the games as well. Our city's Veterans Day program is on Sunday, November 11, at 1:30 at Veterans Park. The rain backup plan is in the Neely Center there at Veterans Park if it happens to be raining. Finally, the Community Thanksgiving has been scheduled for November 15 at 1:30 at the Link Center. We'll have some more announcements on that. We're going to try to do it a little bit, of course, the central theme of, of course, is the same of giving thanks to the Lord for many blessings that we have, but we're going to try to involve a more, a broader array of ministers and that type thing, try to get more community attendance at this year's event. So, with that, we conclude the mayor's report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, we'll close the regular meeting, open the public agenda. Public agenda, 5.1, public hearings. 5.1A, public hearings regarding lot mowing lists. Is anyone here to address the lot mowing? Okay, 5.1B, public hearings regarding November 6, 2018 judicial candidates. We have two that I know are here tonight. We're going to go in alphabetical order. Throw us to Stacy Bevel if you'll come, and we'll give you five minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to come here tonight. My name is Stacy Schumpert Bevel. I am a resident of the Richmond community, which is south of Morville. I've lived there all my life. I actually live on the farm that the Indians gave my family six generations ago. My family farms there, and we're actively involved in the agricultural community. I have married to Bart Bevel. I have two children, Blake and Tanner. Tanner is a Bulldog in Mississippi State, and Blake is nine. I want to come here tonight to tell you a little bit about my candidacy. I am running for county court judge. Judge Brett is retiring, and I am running for his post, which is post one. If I am elected, I will be what's called the senior judge because I have the largest, excuse me, the highest number of years' experience of the two candidates that will be elected for either post. In the senior judge position, I will be able to choose what type of cases that I will hear, what the docket will look like, what the other judges will be doing. I will also be in charge of the business of the court, the financial responsibilities, things as that. I feel that I am responsible, and I'm also qualified for that in that I was Judge Brett's actual court administrator for five years there. I ran the court with him on a day-to-day basis. Also, I am, when I left Judge Brett, I went over to Etowah County where I am now, and I have run the youth court there for that time, almost five years. I am the court administrator there in the youth court of Etowah County. I'm also the prosecutor. I'm really excited about this opportunity because this is, this is my passion. This is what I do. I do this every day. Right now, I also, in conjunction with the youth court, I also work with Attorney General's Office. I represent children that are in foster care. I go with them to their hearings when their parents cannot get them back because of their, they've not been able to complete their service plans, and we have their parents' rights terminated, and I move with them all the way through adoption. I believe that all of these things give me the unique qualifications to do this job. I'm excited. There's lots, lots of possibilities with this court to include the youth court, I mean, to include a drug court for our children, and there's a lot of grant opportunities available. So, I would like to work with this council and with the city, if I'm elected, to really go after some of our issues that we need, and I think one of those is our drug issue. So, thank you for letting me come here tonight, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Sadie Gardner?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and address the council. I'm a lifelong resident here of Tupelo, so it means a lot to be finishing up the, or kind of the countdown of the campaign here in Tupelo. I am Sadie Gardner, and I'm running for circuit court judge. It's a bittersweet moment for me to be standing here and announcing that, as I have over the last 10 months, because my dad, Judge Tommy Gardner, is retiring, which is opening up this possibility for me and this opportunity. He was elected when I was two, and then he was sworn in just a month before I turned three years old. So, it's really an end of a lifetime that I've known and also the opening of the door of possibly a new one. I just want to take an opportunity to tell you a little bit about my professional history and experience. The last seven years, I've spent at the DA's office as an assistant district attorney. I spent the first two and a half years there prosecuting in all seven counties in our district. I prosecuted all crimes against women and assisted on all crimes against children, and I did that for a little over two and a half years. And then I was assigned to Pontotack and Etowah Counties where I still prosecute crimes against women and children there, but also prosecute all crimes, including everything from a minor drug possession, felony-level drug possession, all the way up to capital murder. So, I've done that for the past four and a half years in those two counties and assisted around the district still on some crimes against women in the other counties. Prior to that, I was staff attorney for Judge Glenn Davidson, federal court judge down in Aberdeen, and so for three years, I was his sole staff attorney. So, everything that was filed in his courtroom, whether it was a civil lawsuit or a criminal case, it came across my desk. And in those three years, I was an active member of his chambers, and I saw just exactly what it took to run a judge's chambers, how you interact with not only your staff, but the attorneys that practice in your courtroom. Prior to that, I was with Mitchell McNutt and Sams. I represented and did a lot of work for the City of Tupelo while there. I also represented healthcare professionals in our district, along with a lot of our small business owners, school boards, and other business entities across this district. And I tell you all that because that is what I've done for the past 16 years, and that is exactly what the circuit court does. The circuit court handles all civil suits, all larger civil suits, and all criminal, felony criminal court matters. So, for 16 years, I've done exactly what the circuit court handles, and in my entire life, I've seen from a personal standpoint exactly what it takes to be the circuit court judge. I've lived it, and I've seen the sacrifices that have to be made, the hard decisions that have to be made, because you're dealing with people's lives. You have people's lives in your hands, and I do not take that responsibility and will not take that responsibility lightly. So, November 6 will be here before we know it, and I wish that, I ask that on November 6, that you vote for me, Sadie Gardner, for circuit judge. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. 5.2, citizens' hearings. There are no items. We'll close the public agenda and open the regular session. Six is action agenda. 6.1, review, adopt, reject resolutions to educating costs and assessing liens against real property under Mississippi Code annotated 21-19-11, 1972, as amended for lot mowing. Salute. Second. Motion by Mr. Lynn Bryan, second by Councilman Wigginton. All in favor? 6.2, review, adopt, reject resolutions to educating costs and assessing liens against real properties under Mississippi Code annotated 21-19-11, 1972, as amended for demolitions. So moved. Second. Was that Mr. Jennings just had the motion and second by Mr. Palmer? All in favor? Routine agenda. 7.1, review, approve, reject minutes of October 2, 2018, regular city council meetings.
Make to approve these minutes.
Second. Motion by Councilman Bryan, second by Councilwoman Davis. All in favor? Come on, 7-3.
7-2.
7-2. Review, approve, reject advertising and promotional expenses.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Wigginton, second by Councilman Palmer. All in favor? The advertising tonight is for the Northeast Daily Journal by Tupelo Water and Light for fall home improvement for $786.80. 7.3, review and pay bills.
I move we pay the bills.
Second. Motion by Councilman Palmer, second by Councilman Wigginton. All in favor? Bills were paid tonight by Councilman Palmer, Councilwoman Davis, myself, Councilman Lynn Bryan, Councilman Willie Jennings, supervised by Mrs. Shilton without conspicuously missing. Mr. Timmons was not available for direction tonight. 7.4, review, approve, reject approval of additional ARC funding for the Fair Park Detention Pond Project.
I move that we would approve the additional ARC funding for the Fair Park Detention Pond Project.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Davis, second by Councilman Wigginton. Is any questions or discussion? All in favor? 7.5, review, approve, reject approval of contractor for the Fair Park Detention Pond Project. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan, second by Councilman Palmer. Any question? All in favor? 7.6, review, approve, reject approval of new hotspot grant for Thayer Nicholas Park camera project. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Jennings, second by Councilman Palmer. All in favor? Got a discussion?
I just want to make a comment. I made in the work session yesterday, I just want to say I thank Ms. Terry Blizzard for, and I noticed the president made remarks, and I appreciate that. I just want to also say I appreciate her hard work and all the grants that she did. This is one of the grants we've been working for a long time, trying to get cameras in the park to make it safe for our citizens, Tupelo, because we have a big investment in all our parks, and it's going to help out all parties, keep down anything that doesn't, special criminal or any activity. So, I just want to thank her for working hard to get these grants. It's a large grant, so I just want to thank her and everyone involved in that.
I'd like to echo that. We have a lot of great employees in our city. Ms. Terry is one of them. She's really one of them. We appreciate what she does for the city.
Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor? 7.7, review, approve, reject approval of new federal justice assistance grant.
Make to approve this grant.
Second. Motion by Councilman Bryan, second by Councilman Wigginton. All in favor? That document is actually on file in the council chambers with our secretary. It's about a 40, 50-page document, so we didn't print a copy for everyone. 7.8, review, approve, reject approval of a new firehouse subs grant.
I move that we would approve the new firehouse sub grant, subs grant.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Davis, the second by Councilman Jennings. Any discussion? All in favor? That grant is for $19,000, which will upgrade the Tupelo Fire Department's equipment. 7.9, review, approve, reject approval of a new bulletproof vest grant. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Bryan, second by Councilman Palmer. All in favor? This grant is for $6,292, which will cover the cost of some, replacing some vests for the police department. 7.10, review, approve, reject approval of an engineer for hive water tank project. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Lynn Bryan, second by Councilman Mike Bryan. Any discussion? All in favor? 7.11, review, approve, reject fiscal year 219 budget revision number one.
I move that we would approve the budget revision number one.
Second. Motion by Councilman Davis, second by Councilman Lynn Bryan. Kim, do we need explanation on that?
This is, and she'd certainly do a better job than me, but this is amendment to reflect the budget revision for accepting the grants that we're approving tonight, so adding those funds to the budget.
Okay. All in favor? 7.12, review, approve, reject audit report for the City of Tupelo Electric Department.
I move we approve the audit report for the City of Tupelo Electric Department.
Second. Motion by Councilman Palmer, second by Councilman Jennings. Any, any comments or questions on that? All in favor? 7.13, review, approve, reject PERS actuary evaluation report.
Mr., I think the citizen need to know that, that was a great audit.
The electric department?
Yeah, it was a good audit, so.
Yes, we got a report on that yesterday in the council meeting, and I didn't understand all the numbers, but I'm told it's a good report. Mr. Jennings can answer questions on those numbers. 7.12, we're on three now, valuation, PERS actuary value report. So moved. Second. Motion by Councilman Palmer, second one by Councilman Jennings. Any, that's a public employee retirement system, which our city clerk has to file with having on available that we've approved it and run it by the council, I believe. Am I right on that? All in favor?
Yes. It's for the leasing.
Okay.
The ones that are under the old retirement system. So, we had to show that we had, we had the village to actually pay that.
Okay, all in favor? 7.14, review, approve, reject found lot mowing list.
I move that we would approve the found mowing list.
Second. Motion by Councilman Davis, second by Councilman Wigginton. All in favor? 7.15, review, accept, reject minutes of October 1, 2018, planning committee meeting.
I make a motion, will you accept the minutes?
Second. Motion by Councilman Wigginton, second by Councilman Palmer. Any question or concern? All in favor? 7.16, review, accept, reject minutes of September 10, 2018, major thoroughfare program meeting.
I move, I move that we approve these minutes.
Second. Motion by Councilman Palmer, second by Councilman Mike Bryan. All in favor? 7.17, review, approve, ratify, reject Fair Park Tax Increment Financing Plan Development and Reimbursement Agreement between the City of Tupelo and Maloney Development Properties LLC. This was tabled on July 17, 2018, and we're going to leave that on the table at this time. 7.18, review, ratify, reject interlocal agreement for the North Mississippi Narcotics Unit.
I move that we would review and ratify agreement for the North Mississippi Narcotics Unit.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Davis, second by Councilman Mike Bryan. All in favor? Chief, do we need any discussion on that, as far as you know, or mayor?
This is the annual, just as stated, interlocal agreement for the eight agencies that comprise the North Mississippi Narcotics Unit. Tupelo Police Department is the host agency of the narcotics unit and is based out of the City of Tupelo, but is a combined effort with the seven other agencies.
Thank you. 7.19, review, approve, reject the resolution to surplus North Mississippi narcotic unit, narcotic unit vehicles.
Mr. President, I would like to move that review and approve, reject a resolution to supply surplus North Mississippi narcotic unit vehicle.
Second. Motion by Councilman Jennings, second by Councilman Mike Bryan. All in favor? 7.20, review, approve, reject request to reaffirm the City of Tupelo EEO plan. Copy of that plan is on file in the clerk's office.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Wigginton, second by Councilman Palmer. All in favor? 7.21, review, adopt, reject the limited English proficiency policy.
I move that we would approve limited English proficiency policy.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Davis, second by Councilman Jennings. Ms. Logan, do we need to discuss that a little?
That is one of the new requirements with the justice assistance grants, along with the reaffirmation of the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan that we just passed or reaffirmed, and it is a policy that we have that we do not discriminate against limited English proficient people, and we have a plan to address their needs when we administer these grants.
Thank you. All in favor? 7.22, review, approve, reject amendment to previous ordinances prescribing and fixing rates and charges for water furnished to consumers and for use of the public sanitary sewer system of the City of Tupelo, Mississippi, requiring payment of such rates and charges and restoring, amending, and reorganizing Chapter 26, Article 3 Code of Ordinances of the City of Tupelo, Mississippi, due to errors and codification.
I move we approve this amendment to the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilman Palmer, second by Councilman Lynn Bryan. All in favor? What this is, is a pass through the Northeast Mississippi Regional Water Supply District, increased the cost of 1,000 gallons of water by 2 cents, and we're just passing that through the city on to the customers. 7.23, review, award, reject bid for the Coley Road, McCullough Boulevard, Coley Road, West Jackson Street intersection improvement project.
Make a motion, we award the bid.
Second. Motion by Councilman Wigginton, second by Councilman Mike Bryan. 7.24, review, award, reject bid for the Fair Park District Ground Maintenance 12-Month Bid.
I move we award this maintenance, ground maintenance bid.
Second. Motion by Councilman Palmer, second by Councilman Jennings. All in favor? 7.25, review, approve, reject Homeland Security Grant for statewide training coordinator.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Wigginton, second by Councilman Palmer. All in favor? That's a $60,000 grant for funding the statewide training coordinator salary. We're lucky to have that to pass. 7.26, review, approve, reject Homeland Security Training Coordinator Contract.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Wigginton, second by Councilman Palmer. All in favor? That's, that concludes the regular agenda, the state agenda, review, discuss draft of a mobile food vendor's ordinance.
Move it up.
Move it up.
8.2, review, discuss the extension of the commercial tax abatement district.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules and move this up to the action agenda and vote on it tonight.
Second. Motion by Councilman Wigginton, second by Councilman Bryan. To move it up, all in favor? Oh, was it questions? Did it have any, asked any questions?
We'll move it up and then vote on it.
We had, we voted on it? We just moved it up?
All, okay. And now, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this extension to the commercial tax abatement district.
Second. Motion by Councilman Wiggins, second by Councilman Bryan. At this time, we will ask questions.
I've just got a question. I just had a question yesterday in the meeting. I think the attorney said that, being correct me, we had to have a plan, and what'd you say, we had to have in place before we could vote on?
I've not seen the actual ordinance from Mr. Cooper on that. We don't have all the required paperwork at this time, so we've got to handle both of them.
And that's the reason I asked a question, because I was following what I heard yesterday.
Shane said yesterday we did.
He said we did.
We don't have an ordinance to amend the, we don't have amended ordinance, but we do have a map and it shows the area. We can conform the ordinance to that area on that, whatever the council wishes on it.
Can we just hold off until we get something that we can vote on, just inform out and just say that y'all need to have it by the first November meeting or something like that?
We could do it one of two ways. We could either vote on it tonight and then ratify the map at a later date, or, as Councilman Bryan suggested, come back. The ordinance does not change any of the language. It simply extends the map. So it just extends the boundary of that existing district up to get closer to the interchanges for I-22. So.
So we can vote on it tonight and ratify it at the next meeting?
I think that would be fine.
Okay.
We got a vote and a second, and so we got.
And that's the reason I brought it up, because there was a question about it yesterday. And I just want to make sure that.
I believe that we can approve the districts as laid out in the exhibits here to the agenda tonight, and we can conform an ordinance to that and approve it at the next meeting.
And before we vote, I just want to include this. The people that watches this, they're looking at this as a long doc, and we went through it quick, but we spent over an hour yesterday going through every detail of this. I just want to let them know we ain't just flying through this. And that's why I bought, I made notes on what was said yesterday, and I just want to make sure that that was clarified. I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure we clarify that.
If I need, I can go do another report if we're going too fast.
All in favor? Okay. 9 is executive session. Mr. Logan, do we determine a need for an executive session?
We have the extension of an option which compiles under 9.1, the first matter, and then on 9.2, we have the discussion of the sale, leasing of lands, which is an appropriate matter, and also 9.3, which deals with some sale of real property and also the location, relocation, or expansion of a business or method of service or industry. And that also is an appropriate matter for executive session. We will have a vote at least on 9.1 and 9.3 when we come out.
I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Davis, second by Councilman Wiggington. All in favor of going into executive session?
HealthWorks explains the science behind health. And when you can see children understanding the science behind something, that light bulb goes off, you realize that what you're teaching, they're understanding, and that's what makes the difference. When that parent or grandparent comes up to you after the class and says, "I learned something today. I needed to be here today to hear this lesson or to hear this message. This is great."
We have seven or eight behaviors in this country that drive 30% or 40% of our total healthcare costs, and they're all behaviors that are preventable. And we don't have any primary prevention strategy to address those behaviors. And HealthWorks is a primary prevention strategy. I think that's vitally important. I've lived in a lot of places, and I've never lived in a place like this where the community came together over an idea and then made it happen.
My dad was on the first trip to South Bend when the whole idea of something like this coming to Tupelo, and when he came back, said, you know, "We could do something like that. We could even do something better than that." Personally, when I was mayor, we used HealthWorks when we applied for the healthiest city in Mississippi. Then we went to All-American City in Kansas City, and we used HealthWorks as part of our application. We became an All-American City again. It's been really important to me to see its success and how many children we've been able to help get it started on the right way. So if our community is going to be successful in addressing those issues, HealthWorks needs to stay healthy.
HealthWorks is the absolute inspiration for the work that I'm doing for my career. And I describe them as a public health organization that actually meets the needs of their community. And that means that they don't just listen to what they should be doing, as public health would tell them. They actually listen to the community and listen to what their needs are and meet those needs at the root cause and to give the community what it's looking for.
The connection with HealthWorks has been very important to us over the years. HealthWorks does have data that the programs are working through their pre and post surveys. They can show that our students have gained knowledge through the activities that they have participated in. As an administrator, I'm responsible for K-12 students. HealthWorks is very beneficial in offering different programs to meet the various different competencies that we're required to teach in our health curriculum.
I have been using HealthWorks almost since the day that they started. I have seen them add to our community in many ways. I've seen it with my children and my students because it provides for them a place where they can learn about being healthy. They can learn about their body. They can learn about science, and it's in a fun way where they don't even know they're learning about science. HealthWorks is a place to where the whole child is taught. It provides kinesthetic learning. It provides auditory, visual learning. So children with any learning style can benefit from it, and they don't feel excluded. They get a full-rounded educational experience.
You know, we say in the classroom, at schools, that, you know, learning can be fun. Well, here, learning is fun every day, and it's so exciting to see that. We get a lot of feedback from teachers that what we're doing works because you just, not only do you see it in the kids' eyes, but you see it in the teachers' eyes also and see them nodding and smiling like, "Hey, we're all getting this together. This is what I did in the classroom," and thank goodness.
HealthWorks is great at educating children in a non-traditional way. I think that is the very best thing that HealthWorks does. We actually get the children up, and they're moving about. They're doing a lot of physical activity. There's dancing involved. So things that you don't normally get to do in the classroom, you can do them here at HealthWorks. I love to see the children learning. I love to see the moment when the light bulb goes off. But at HealthWorks, we get it. It's teaching children how to advocate for their own health. It's teaching children how to have a healthy lifestyle.
And you could tell that a lot of smart people came together to talk about what is it that we want to accomplish here. And so, and everything seems very intentional, very well planned. There's a lot of detail that has been attended to. Think that, you know, you are able to reach the entire community, so not only the children, but their parents. And so in the same way, when the children are here learning, the parents are picking up as well. By having programs on the weekends, programs at night, programs that are aimed at different age groups, we're very specific here, and I think that's really special. To see that kind of dedication, instead of like, "Well, here's this really pretty building. We'll do some nice things. Come if you can." It's really integrated, I think, into the fabric of Tupelo life. I love the innovation. I love the dedication to excellence that we see in here. Our children deserve a place like that.
We are going to have to call on the community to continue to support it in order to sustain the programs and the facility, and it's just an expensive operation. But when you think that we are in one of the poorest states with the poorest statistics about health and wellness in the nation, how can we not support this? How can we not attempt to make this something that will change health outcomes among our population? You know, Tupelo has a history of stepping up, rising to the occasion, and they certainly did that with HealthWorks. The people who, it was a community-based effort. It was more than just a few large donors giving to HealthWorks. This was supported across the board at so many giving levels. That will enable us to continue to provide the programs that we have now, expand on those programs, and expand them to other areas in the state. To have a facility like HealthWorks in a community with a population of 36,000, as Tupelo does, it's really a gift to the community. To be able to have our children, our schoolchildren, exposed to learning in a fun, stimulating way as they are here, and learning things that change, that will improve their quality of life for generations is really an enormous benefit to this community.